Well, good evening, and on behalf of the Commissioners and staff, I would like to welcome you to the October 23rd, 2025 City of Roseville Planning Commission Meeting. Please put all electronic devices on silent at this time. Agendas are available on the back counter of the room, and if you plan to speak at tonight's meeting, complete a blue speaker card and return it to a staff member. As a reminder, Planning Commission meetings are broadcast live, replayed on Comcast 14, and available on the city's YouTube channel. I will now call the meeting to order. Lupi Nelson, please have a roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Hagler?
Here.
Commissioner Jensen?
Here.
Commissioner is absent, excused. Commissioner Pryor?
Here.
Commissioner Unidad?
Here.
Vice Chair Brashir is absent, excused, and Chair Hagen-Joss?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you please begin staff introductions?
Yes, good evening, Chair Hagen-Joss and Commissioners. Lupi Nelson, Recording Secretary.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jonathan Levi, Senior Deputy City Attorney.
Good evening, Chair Hagen-Joss and Commissioners. Greg Bitter, Planning Manager.
Good evening, Lauren Hawker, Senior Planner.
Good evening, Commissioners. Eric Singer, Associate Planner.
Thank you. The public comment is a time for anyone who would like to address the Commission on any item not on tonight's agenda. When addressing the Commission, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the Commission on any item not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I will close the public comment period. Next, we have the Consent Calendar, which consists of routine items that may be approved under one motion as recommended in the staff reports. However, each item may be considered separately upon a request by the audience, Planning Commission, or staff. Tonight's consent calendar consists of one item, Item 5.1, minutes from the September 25th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Is there anyone on the hearing? None, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Commissioner Pryor has made the motion, and Commissioner Unidad has seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hagler?
Yes.
Commissioner Unidad?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
And Chair Hagen-Joss?
Yes, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the Request and Presentation portion. Before we begin, I want to review the meeting procedures. We will hear the staff presentation, then I will take questions from the Commission, then I will open the public hearing and public comment. The public will have an opportunity to speak, then I will close public comment and public hearing, and the Commission may ask questions of staff. Finally, the Commission will consider this item and make a decision based on the information provided in the report from staff and the testimony presented during tonight's hearing. Item 6.1 is a request that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution affirming the multi-hazard mitigation plan dated December 2023 is adopted and incorporated by reference as part of the safety element of the City of Roseville General Plan for the record file number PL 16-0336. Lauren, may we have your presentation, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to give my presentation. This is a very brief item. I have one slide for you tonight. So as you stated in the recommendation, we can just move forward. So you're not here, I'm not, we are not asking for you to amend either the multi-hazard mitigation plan or the general plan. This is, the city's multi-hazard mitigation plan was adopted and is dated December 2023, and the general plan safety element states that the multi-hazard mitigation plan is incorporated by reference as it may be amended from time to time. But California Disaster Assistance Act funding is contingent on this being the case, and the Office of Emergency Services has requested that we provide them a resolution affirming that the multi-hazard mitigation plan is incorporated by reference and adopted as part of the safety element. So that is what we have for you tonight, where your recommendation to council is to adopt the resolution affirming that the multi-hazard mitigation plan is indeed adopted into the safety element. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time? I will now open the public hearing and the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the Commission on this item? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment period and public hearing. Commissioners, are there any questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend the City Council adopt the resolution. That's for the request is the adoption of a resolution affirming the multi-hazard mitigation plan dated December 23rd is adopted and incorporated by reference as part of the safety element of the City of Roseville General Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pryor has made the motion, and Commissioner Hagler has seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unidad?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagler?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
And Chair Hagen-Joss?
Yes, the motion is approved. Item 6.2 is a request that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve an ordinance amendment to Title 19, the zoning ordinance of the Roseville Municipal Code to clarify the city's definition for kitchens. For the record, it is file number PL 25-0452. Eric, may we have your presentation, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Hagen-Joss. So unfortunately, my items are going to be slightly more in-depth than Lauren's, but we do feel they are very important. So the first one, obviously, is the zoning ordinance update for definitions of kitchens. So why are we doing this? Well, currently, the zoning ordinance defines a housing unit by the presence of having one kitchen. Historically, we've allowed second kitchens in different forms, kind of treating them more like guest quarters, but not necessarily always counting them as a second dwelling unit or a second housing unit on the property. In recent years, due to just an increase in the number of housing units that have been proposed on individual lots, a lot of these are due to changes in state law, you're seeing a lot of applications for ADUs, JADUs, accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units, as well as laws like SB 9 that allow two homes per lot by right on many of these single-family zone properties. It's becoming more important than ever to clearly define what constitutes a housing unit, and importantly, what kind of housing unit it actually is. So now that properties are allowed to have up to three housing units, in, you know, many cases, a home, an ADU, and a JADU all together, we want to make sure we're accurately counting all of the units that are on these properties and ensuring that they're not getting overbuilt. We have seen some proposals for home additions that you can tell are pretty clearly intended to be used as a second dwelling unit, but not labeled as such, and so it's something that we're having to constantly flag as it comes through the permit center. What we're proposing as a fix for this is a new objective definition for kitchens, efficiency kitchens, and wet bars. And that's so we can clearly define what's constituting a housing unit and what's not, and then again, what type of housing unit would it be based on that kitchen? There are many other jurisdictions in the region that have already undertaken several, you know, similar efforts, so we're kind of following in line with what they've been So the proposed definitions for kitchen would basically involve having permanent provisions for cooking. So that is, you know, a 220-volt receptacle for a stove or an oven, or a dedicated gas line. That also does require minimum dimensions for things like a kitchen sink, food preparation, countertop areas. When you're moving down the rung to efficiency kitchens, that requirement for the permanent provisions for cooking, so that 220 volt or that dedicated gas line, it doesn't have to have that. It can, but it doesn't have to. It does have to have some type of a cooking appliance, and it does have to have those, again, minimum def, excuse me, dimensions for the food preparation area, the sink, et cetera. Now, primary units and ADUs are required to have full kitchens. A junior accessory dwelling unit is only required to have an efficiency kitchen, and these are all terms that have been, you know, passed as part of state law, so none of this is necessarily new terminology that we're introducing. It's all just based on existing nomenclature. Where we're drawing the cutoff between ADUs, JADUs, and housing units, and then what would just be considered an amenity, is a wet bar. A wet bar is not allowed to have any cooking appliances in it, and it does have maximum dimensions for those aforementioned criteria, like the food prep area, the appliances, and the sink. So again, just to reiterate, as permits will come in, we can use these definitions between planning, between building, to have a very clear and accurate way of defining what it is that's being proposed. Is it a housing unit? Is it just an addition to the home, et cetera? And again, only one kitchen per housing unit is allowed per our zoning ordinance. In terms of public outreach and environmental review, we did present these proposed amendments at the September 18th Arcona Board Meeting, as well as to the North State Building Industry Association. Arcona Board members did not really have any substantive comments. The BIA had a minor technical comment that staff addressed and incorporated. Since the posting of the public hearing notice to the Arcona website and to the Press Tribune, we've not received any additional comments or questions, and the project is exempt from CEQA due to being a policy and procedure-making activity per Section 15061B3. So lastly, staff recommends, that the Planning Commission recommend the City Council adopt two findings of fact and approve the zoning ordinance amendments, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time?
I have a very minor question regarding the kitchens and the provision of the stove for the full kitchen. For the electric stove, it must be a 220 volt. I know there are newer stovetops that are induction that work just as efficiently on 110.
So we are basing it off of the fact that currently, I believe, building code, as well as what the state law entails, says that a full kitchen requires that 220 or that dedicated gas line. It's the gray area of where all of this falls, and that's why it was important to incorporate additionally the dimensions for the food preparation area, the appliance size, the sink size, things of that nature, so that we can basically say, okay, well, you've triggered at least one of these requirements that tips the scale from wet bar into a type of kitchen. We can flag the rest of it, you know, deficiency kitchen versus regular kitchen, but at least we know that it's a housing unit versus just a simple addition to the home with an amenity like a wet bar. So that, that's kind of where we have a secondary backstop, essentially.
Yeah, and I think the key is that at a 110 volt, you, that limits you in terms of what stoves or other cooking appliance options you have, and we're thinking about building this home so that it can have a full kitchen with any range of kitchen appliances, and that's sort of the cutoff between an efficiency kitchen, which is limited in terms of what kind of cooking appliance you'd be able to have.
Makes sense, yeah, thank you.
I just have one quick question, just for my own education. So on a wet bar, it looks like you've got it set up so that they can make drinks and those kind of things there, but it has outlets, so it doesn't preclude, preclude them from having a hot plate and a microwave on there as well, although it really limits what they can cook, but they can still do that with a wet bar?
It is, it is one of those things that unfortunately you can't catch at a plan check, you know, it's, they're showing that they have 110 volt outlets, well, those are all throughout the house.
Could have a blender.
Could have a blender, right? But we felt, again, that having the backstop of the dimension requirement is helpful.
I just don't understand, I was understanding with that.
Yeah, you could, as long as it's not causing any problems, plug in a hot plate and do whatever, but if we found out somebody was living there and it was reported to us, then we have a rule that says you can't have cooking appliances.
It's something enforceable.
From your perspective, you've created limitations as to what they can actually do. They can cook a turkey on a hot plate. So those things are kind of built into the ordinance.
The practical application of it, correct, yeah.
Any other questions? I will now open the public hearing and the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the Commission? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment period and public hearing. Commissioners, are there any additional questions?
I just have one last question, because we were talking about taking credit for the housing needs. Is there different levels of housing credits you get for each one of these units between a accessory built dwelling unit and a JADU, and clearly not for the wet bar, but when we're going to the state, we're saying how many units we're providing. Do we get, what are the credits, are they point six, point four?
For, you get, it's for the unit, depends on the affordability. So there's no, like, point six or point, it's one, one unit is one unit. So for ADUs, we were allowed to count a certain percentage of the ADUs we expected over the planning period would, could be counted as affordable, and our number was a little low because we weren't necessarily counting all these things that are actually ADUs.
So this is the good thing for the city, making sure we're taking full credit for everything that we're doing.
That is correct.
Definitely. Absolutely.
Any other questions? Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
Well, since I've been talking, go ahead. Consider the two findings of fact, recommend that the City Council approve the ordinance amendment to Title 19 of the Roseville Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Commissioner Jensen has made the motion, and Commissioner Unidad has seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hagler?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unidad?
Yes.
Chair Hagen-Joss?
Yes, the motion is approved. Item 6.3 is a request that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council consider and adopt a resolution approving the infill objective design standards. For the record, file number PL 25-0450. Eric, may we have your presentation, please?
So, again, another fairly meaty topic, so buckle up. A little background on why we're interested in implementing objective design standards for the infill portions of the city. So, next slide, please. The city currently has our community design guidelines, or our CDGs. They're a robust set of guidelines that apply citywide, specific plans as well, and most areas of the city would supplement those CDGs with additional objective design standards anytime we get a development application in, use the combination of all of those standards and guidelines together to facilitate good development. The older parts of the city that aren't subject to a specific plan, what we call the infill areas, they don't have the additional objective design standards that are found within all of our specific plans. In addition to that, there have been many recent state laws for many different types of housing products that no longer, projects, I should say, that no longer require discretionary review, so only objective design standards and not subjective guidelines may be applied in reviewing those types of projects. Staff's increasingly seen more and more infill residential development proposals that unfortunately are inconsistent with our CDGs, but because they're subjective guidelines, in some cases, they couldn't be applied to maybe craft a better project. For example, we've seen development proposals that have included things like multiple driveways with limited landscaping that would consume most of a property's frontage, poor pedestrian design, it has a negative impact on the streetscape, but it doesn't preclude, you know, applicants from proposing it necessarily. What we're proposing is a set of objective design standards for residential development based on the CDGs largely, that would address the gap between subjective guidelines that in some cases cannot be applied, and having a hard backstop, essentially, of standards that would have to be met in order to approve a project at the staff level. We're proposing them mainly to ensure that any new residential infill development that comes in, it's livable for both our current residents as well as, you know, accommodating for future growth, for future residents. So looking at what parts of the city this would apply to, it's primarily the city's core infill area, it does apply to our three corridor-specific plan areas as well. Now, we are aware that the corridor plans have their own version of ODS, essentially. There may be a few duplicative standards, and so planning staff is going to be bringing a cleanup amendment early next year to reconcile some of those differences through specific plan amendments. The ODS would apply to multifamily, small lot, or medium-density residential projects in these areas. Exhibits A and B of the staff report have kind of all the specific details and what those criteria that would have to be met for the housing product, or projects, excuse me. So the standards themselves would address things like site planning, architectural design, colors and materials, edge and boundary treatments, vehicular access, lighting, landscaping, and so on. Again, these are all included in Exhibits A and B of the staff report. For the purposes of this discussion, I just wanted to include a couple examples that can help kind of illuminate what we're trying to go for here. So the first standard presents, or excuse me, prevents individual driveways in a multi-unit development, so it's intended to address the issue that I described earlier where the frontage was mostly driveway, leading to garages that were relatively close to the street. This would consolidate it all to a single point of access, as we start to see more projects that have multiple units that are proposed on relatively smaller sites in older, single-family neighborhoods. The second standard requires that if a wall is two-thirds of the property length or more, it has to have some type of variation in the wall plane. So it's basically to prevent one long, unbroken, flat wall all along a property line, which unfortunately is also an example of something that staff has seen recently. We want to make sure that you're not having a negative impact on your neighbor's view sheds. Most of the time, staff is able to work with applicants to ensure that projects meet our CDGs currently, but we do want to be proactive. We want to make sure that we're ahead of these types of proposals that are coming in. We're starting to see them more frequently. Our ability to regulate them with the CDGs is decreasing, you know, year after year with every new state law that's passed, and so this is, again, hopefully, an effective backstop against poor design and poor development. So again, in terms of public outreach, we met with Arcona Board members on that September 18th meeting and discussed these proposed ODS. They did not have any outstanding questions. We also presented them to the North State Building Industry Association. They did not have questions or take an opposed position. We additionally haven't received any additional comments or questions from members of the public since posting notice at the public hearing on Arcona's website or in the Press Tribune. And again, it's a policy and procedure-making activity, so it is exempt from CEQA per Section So again, planning, our recommended action is that the Planning Commission recommended the City Council to consider and adopt a resolution that would approve the infill objective design standards, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there questions for staff at this time?
I have a quick, clarifying question. So it's intended to apply to the infill areas, which basically are outside of specific plan areas. Do we have any specific plan areas where their development agreements have expired, and then they would be subject to this infill, or how does that work?
We do have areas where their development agreements are expired, but they would not be subject to these design standards, because the design, the specific plan design standards still apply, even if the development agreements have expired.
So the design, the specific plan areas don't expire, they stay in place?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Yep.
I just have a question about, about notice. Normally, I'm used to seeing when a project comes in, that there's been mainly to 300, within 300 feet of a particular project. Is that not something that's required for the people who are in the infill here, you know, potentially, there? I'm just trying to think about people who might be interested in this.
So this, 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 these particular, this particular zoning ordinance amendment doesn't, doesn't apply to any specific parcel, I mean, it applies to everybody in general, but there isn't, there isn't a project that it applies to specifically that you would, you would put a 300-foot notice on. So in those cases where there's more citywide or these larger areas of the city, it's really the newspaper notice that covers our public noticing.
But that's also why, for things like this, we actually go to the Arcona Board, so they can dissent, ask us any questions they have and disseminate information, and yeah.
And they potentially might disseminate the information to the neighborhoods.
Right.
Any other questions? I will now open the public hearing and the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the Commission on this item? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment period and the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I think this is a very important motion to be made, and something I strongly stand behind. I recommend that the, or we recommend that the, the motion is, we recommend the City Council consider and adopt a resolution approving the infill objective design standards. That's for item 6.3 and file number PL 25-0450.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Pryor has made the motion, and Commissioner Hagler has seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Unidad?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Pryor?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagler?
Yes.
And Chair Hagen-Joss?
Yes, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the Commissioner's staff report. Are there any reports from staff?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm going to make my comments from the podium of the Seating Chair. First couple housekeeping items, I just want to report to you that we will not have a meeting in November, but we will have a meeting on December 11th. Right now, it looks like there might be one or two items for December 11th. I also want to report out that the City Council on October 1st did vote to approve the ordinance that you all recommended regarding tolling the expiration dates on projects that are subject to lawsuits. So I believe the second reading was last week, and that effective date will be in, around the 14th of November. So now I want to, I think everybody knows that it's Commissioner Jensen's last meeting tonight. Is it, really?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay. Just checking. But, but we wanted, we wanted to thank Rob, Commissioner Jensen, for all his service, and I think it's important for everybody to know that it's not just the last seven years on the, on the Planning Commission that Rob has served the City of Roseville. He's, he's, he worked for the City of Roseville from 1990 until 2018, when he retired from the city. So 28 years as a city employee, you know, he worked in the Public Works Department for, what, 21 years? You know, he worked in the Public Works Department for, what, 21 years? Doing, doing everything, every different position you could be, including director for many years. He was an assistant city manager. He was our city manager for several years at the end of his, his career here. And then immediately, he had his arm twisted, and he was appointed to the planning commission, which we're very thankful for, because he's been, you know, just a wonderful commissioner, chairman, you know. Staff, we work with you all a lot. I work with the chairman, you know, probably more every year. The chairman, I spend more time on different items, and so it's always great to have somebody that can, that, you know, supports staff, that you can talk to about different administrative issues going on with the, with the commission. But it's, I think it's important, on your last night of service to the City of Roseville, to point out that 35 years serving the City of Roseville, when he started with the city, the city population was 44,000 people. So it's, it's, you know, quadrupled. And you've been through everything on it. I snagged, I went up to the clerk's office and snagged a little resolution that they put together for his retirement seven years ago, and it's just, you know, there's things on there that I, that I know of, and there's things on there that I didn't know of. And it's just, it's really impressive. But I think one of the cool things is-- and I don't know what year it is, so you'll have to tell, tell us-- but Rob was named the Public Works Director of the Year by the American City and County Magazine for all of his efforts obtaining Roseville's National FEMA Class 1 status for flood control. So all the work that was done because of all the flooding issues, you know, this, this, I'm sure City-County Journal for the whole nation, you know, picked Rob to be the Public Works Director of the Year, which, you know, that's, that's pretty cool. I mean, I mean, you, yeah, you're going to shrug your shoulders, but that's, that's pretty, pretty impressive.
Brian, and Greg wasn't here, but the flood control--
Yeah.
Helped him out.
Yeah. That's still, it's, it's impressive, the, just all of the different-- the amount of growth that Roseville's had in the last 35 years is, is impressive for a city of our size. And Rob was there through, through everything. So I just wanted to recognize him and thank him, quite frankly, because, you know, I mean, the city wouldn't be what it is without a lot of, a lot of the work you did all those years. So, and I can't, can't thank you enough. You've been a great, I think I've heard from other planning commissioners, you've been a great mentor, a great model on the planning commission. You're really, really good at asking us leading questions that helps us answer questions for the general public to make sure that, you know, that some of the technical issues that just are not really easy for, for the common person to understand, you'll ask a question and lead us into answering a question to make it more, you know, in more common, plain language for people to understand. So I do have something for you. I've got a little pizza here. Sorry, sorry, Commissioner Hagler. This is your, your golden gavel, since you've served on the planning commission. It says, "Rob Jensen, in appreciation for serving on the planning commission, August 2018 through October 2025. Thank you for your service to the citizens of Roseville."
Thank you.
And now, it'll take about 15 minutes for me to read this resolution, so-- I'm not going to do that, no. I know you'd kill me if I did that.
Well, this is kind of unexpected, but I just want--
Have you completed a blue speaker card?
No, I haven't, but I'm not a Roseville resident as of two weeks from now. So it's just been an honor to serve the city. It has been 35 years. It's more than half my life that I've served the City of Roseville, and I have taken that seriously every single day. I appreciate everyone in this room. I respect everyone in this room, especially the city employees. They are far the best staff in the region, and probably the state, and probably across the country. There's a lot of talk about how government employees, you know, come in and punch their time clock and do what they need to do. That's not the case here in Roseville. Every single one of these employees care about the community they live in. Every one of these commissioners, I have so much respect for you and your time you spend in preparing for meetings and making sure you understand what the issues are, and asking the same questions that I ask, to make sure they understand that the community understands why we do what we do, and empathizing with them when we make a decision maybe they're not happy with. But we do that with what we think is in the best interest of the city. And after 35 years, I have mixed feelings. I, I love Roseville. If I was going to stay in California, there was no place I'd rather be than Roseville. But it's time for a change. It's time for my wife and I to go and enjoy the time we've got left. And for those that are listening, we're moving to Florida, and it's going to be an adventure. We say we're moving to Jurassic Park, because there's so many things that we don't know. But I just want to thank staff, and I want to thank the commission, and I want to thank council if they're listening. This community is headed in the right direction. The things, steps we've taken tonight-- you're exactly right, Commissioner Pryor-- this was an important ordinance that we considered tonight. And a lot of people may not recognize that, but it'll play out in the future. And we spend our time doing what's important. So I want to thank you. I don't want to take up too much time, but this means a lot to me. It means a whole lot to me. I really appreciate all of you, so thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to echo what Greg said. You have been a tremendous mentor since I've been on the commission, and I have learned so much from listening to the questions that you ask and figuring out, okay, you know, why, why is he asking that? So, thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Otherwise, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I think I can make that.
Yeah.
A motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Jensen has made the motion, and Commissioner Pryor has seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
May they adjourn.